We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Angola Common Council Monday, March 17. You have a call please.
Councilmember Coffey, Councilmember Olson, Councilmember Sharkey, Councilmember Dow, Councilmember McNermin.
Here, I request approval of the March 3 minutes.
To approve.
Motion second, any discussion?
There's a typo.
There's one page. Go ahead.
It says one and two, I'm looking for it here, and it's O-N instead of O-N-E. I think it's under where we had the visions, one through four. I'm looking for it. If you pointed out to me after the meeting up, correct it before it's printed.
Motion second, and a correction. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed. Public hearing is the first order of business regarding the proposed additional appropriation of the local road and bridge matching grant fund ordinance number 1771 2025. And if you'd like to make comment, please make your way to the microphone and state your name and address. We will now open the public hearing. Since there was a mad rush up to the podium this evening, we will go ahead and close the public hearing regarding the proposed additional appropriation to the local road and bridge matching grant fund ordinance number 1771 2025. Additional appropriation ordinance for the city of Angola, Indiana, local road and bridge matching grant fund for the third reading.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. On your desk in front of you are two appraisals for the Fairhaven Development property. I have had conversations with the owner. He is willing to sell it for less than the average of the two appraisals, and I would like your permission to go ahead and wrap up negotiations on a contract to purchase that piece of property at less than what the appraised values were.
We haven't had a survey or we haven't yet surveyed.
The recommendation? Probably not.
I am trying to pin down the meets and bounds description of the parcel. It apparently was at one time a large parcel and had been sold and accepted, and the description's not clear. So I'm working on that, and if the last resort, I might request a survey.
Is this still physically the piece that's in front of the water treatment?
Yeah, it has a storage building on it. It actually has our road. We have an easement for our.
Okay, it hasn't expanded beyond that.
No, it's the same piece of property that I think I gave you a picture of it last night, we had a conversation. Same piece of property.
Includes the road.
Includes the road and the building.
Do we give the mayor permission to purchase this property?
Second. Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We do have some other unfinished business that is not on the agenda this evening. There's been some conversations with the Pocagin project, as we all know, it came in over the engineer's estimate when we put it out from there. And we have Aaron, 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 give me a second. Aaron Hutton, thank you, I'm sorry, to give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned, my name is Aaron Hutton with Westler Engineering as part of the design team for the wastewater portion of that Pocagin project, along with fleece and vandabrain for the waterside. And as you know, that that project came in over the engineer's estimate, and after further review, we still believe it's over the value of the scope of work that was being proposed. So in the last several weeks, the design team, as well as Angola staff, DNR staff, and IFA staff have all been working together to evaluate alternatives to try to complete that project and get that under contract. We've looked at breaking it up into multiple smaller portions and then rebidding it. There is risk with that, which is why we didn't do that originally. We've reached out to a number of contractors. We did get some support of that, but not an overwhelming amount of support. And I think it would be a lot of coordination and a lot of risk on the owner's part of having five or six potential contractors in the same spot at the same time. So as an alternative to that, we've been looking at using an alternative project delivery method to get a single contractor on board, and that's the direction that we're recommending, which is the use of the Indiana Build-Operate-Transfer procurement method. So I'm going to give you guys a little bit of an update on what that is. I'm going to try to keep it brief, because I know you've got a lot of stuff on your agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to keep that short, but then available to provide any other information that's necessary. So BOT, Build-Operate-Transfer falls under Indiana 523-3 is the Indiana code for that. It was enacted in like 1997, so it's not exactly a new code, but it's kind of morphed over the last several years and become a lot more popular for these types of projects just in the last, say, five years. Originally, it was set up as a public-private partnership type agreement where a private entity could come in, provide financing, help get the project kicked off and going, even own it for a period of time, operate it, get their investment back, and then transfer that back, that asset then over to the city or the unit of government. For these types of projects, that's not how it's really used anymore, but that's how it was originally started and why it's called Build-Operate-Transfer. If someone was building it, operating it, and then transferring that ownership back over. One of the nice things about BOT, but also what makes it a bit confusing to talk about, is it's very flexible in the way that it's written. So all these things are kind of optional. The building part always happens, but the operation, the ownership, the transfer, the financing, the design, there's lots of options with that. So how it works for one community or one project may not look the same for somebody else. So makes it nice, but also a little bit difficult to talk about. So I'd quickly go through that a little bit. As I mentioned, the building part obviously happens, but the financing doesn't have to happen. It can, even, you know, a handful of years ago, when private money, you could get, you know, interest rates in the threes. We did some projects where it was actually cheaper to go out to a local credit union, a developer came in, helped finance that through a local credit union, transferred it over to the owner, to the city, city of Waterloo, or yeah, Waterloo just down the road. Then actually, town of Waterloo, that expansion on the west side of 69 that they did, that was done through a BOT that actually had some financing on the private side of it. But that doesn't have to happen. Obviously, doesn't apply to this project with it being IFA funded, and that's already all worked out. The operate and the ownership, same thing. It can happen, it doesn't have to happen. We're not recommending, obviously, any of that here. There's no reason for someone to operate a portion of your wastewater system or your water system, and the ownership, again, is being funded through IFA, so it's going to transfer immediately. So that will look like a traditional project, again, it's an option, but not something here, which takes care of really the operate and the transfer part of it. The design is also flexible. You can package the design in with the contract, so it's one contract for the design together, like what you would hear about a design-build project, where it's one entity who does everything. But it doesn't have to happen that way. I've done it both ways. In this particular case, we've already done the design as a separate contract. There will be in a construction admin contract, but that's already been agreed to go through Angola and be reimbursed by the IFA, so there's no real reason to package that together. So lots of flexibility, but it comes to for this project, why are we recommending this if it sounds like there's a lot of options we're not taking? It's the procurement side of this. So the way that this works is you select based on an RFQ, so Request for Qualifications. You put that out. We've already talked to a number of contractors, and we believe that we'll get three or four, maybe even five proposals in on this. Then we evaluate those qualifications. The code has a few things you have to ask for in those qualifications, but you can add as much or little as you want. I've seen them as short as 15 or 20-page submittals to 115 or 20-page. The idea is that you put enough specifics in there that you can tell the difference from one contractor to the next and decide which one actually fits you the best, but not so much that it's overwhelming and time-consuming to review. And then, once you make that selection, then you go into a scoping period with the contractor, and they're working essentially at risk, because there's no contract yet, and they work with the owner, the design team, to scope out the project, terms and conditions on the agreement, work out a guaranteed maximum price for the funding of it. We can work through schedule of it, of, say, 18 months, it's take two years. There's a lot of flexibility in that period that you scope that price and all the terms together, and then at that point, we would then make a recommendation to the board to then award it for that particular contract and that price. So that's the huge advantage on this project, is we can work with them to define what are the scope items that have to be done, what ones are maybe less priority that can be on the back burner, and if funds allow it as the project continues, then those can get added in. There's a lot more flexibility, less change orders, more collaboration, really working together with the contractor to figure out how we can get as much work done for the budget that the IFA has as absolutely possible. It's not a new procurement method for the IFA. It's something they're familiar with. It operates similarly to guaranteed savings, which you guys have done before on the highest lift station. You guys did a guaranteed savings contract, it's similar to that. So what is going to be asked of you, is there's nothing tonight? This is just information tonight. I can't tell you why, but for some reason, with this particular code, every entity has to pass either a resolution or an ordinance to adopt the use of this procurement method. It's Indiana code, it's 523-3. I don't know why you have to do it, but the way that it's set up is you must pass an ordinance or a resolution. In this particular case, your procurement process for your services are all set up through your local ordinance, so you're going to do an ordinance is what's going to be asked of that, I believe, in the next council meeting. So you, once you pass that, then that just allows the mayor and us to advertise and send out that RFQ. It's not holding you to anything, it's just giving you, the mayor, the authority to send out the RFQ. So we'll do that, advertise, we'll get those in, do the review through the selection committee, and then bring that back to you as a recommendation to move to step two of the scoping phase, and then we'll work through that, and then it'll come back to you again for then approval of the agreement. So that's very quick, there's a lot covered there, but that's the general process of what we're looking to move forward with, which I think is the best for the project to get as much work done as we can.
Aaron, does that eliminate the bonding situation, that I'm assuming? The financing remains the same.
The funding portion of it remains exactly the same. There are performance bonds and payment bonds from the contractor standpoint are still required, those are still the same, and the repayment method is still the same. The code actually writes that it follows if public funds are used, it follows the same funding source and requirements of 36-1-12. So it follows the same funding repayment terms as normal.
So that protects our projects that are some water tower and individual.
Yeah, 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 so those are still happening on kind of separate, those would not fall under the BOT. So your projects of the two lift station rehabs and the water tower would not fall under the BOT project. It'll be funded through the same group with the IFA, that's all together, but they're separate contracts.
The low interest or no interest situation, that's what I learned.
Yeah, that doesn't change. No, IFA is fortunate, they're fine with however we can get it done.
What did you said, your review process in the state said that the bids were too high? We thought so, we had a stroke. What general amount does the state think that that bid should be?
Well, the state didn't give a, we did an engineer's estimate of it, and we went back and reviewed after the fact. We reviewed with several contractors, and I think the wastewater side was our engineer's estimate. I don't have the number in front of me.
Around 10.
It was 10 something, and I think that that's probably pretty close in line. We reviewed the Brackney bid, the one bid we got on that. Their lift stations alone were $2 million higher than what we had in our estimate just for those two lift stations, and we reviewed that with a number of contractors, and they were like, I have no idea how they come up with that number. So the water side was a bit more spread out of where the overages were. I think that maybe that estimate was a little low, but, so I think that there is a strong possibility that there will be some scope reduction in order to get the project under contract, but we're trying to minimize that as much as we can, and doing it through this process allows us to add it back in later if funds come up. Because the way that these contracts are written is a cost-plus contract, so there'll be a fixed fee that the contractor will get paid for their profit. Everything else is actually cost of the work. So if it comes in under their estimate, then that's work that we can either savings back to the owner, or in this case, we'll just add the scope back in to spend it.
Do you have a water estimate for engineer?
The engineer's estimate for the water, you remember, that was somewhere around seven something, and that bid came in like almost 12, but the estimate was seven. And I think our gut feel is that's probably closer to eight or nine, so they were maybe a little low, but it's not, it's not 12.
And you think that this new process will get us more appropriate bids?
It's going to give us a contractor that's going to work with us to then adjust the scope to figure out what can fit in. So the thought is, is that that GMP contract will probably be set at the IFA's max funding, and then work backwards to squeeze as much scope into that as we can. And we've talked to the IFA about that, and they seem to be generally okay with that, with that process.
They won't raise what they will provide in funds?
In the conversations we've had, that they have a cap on that, basically because of other funding that's going out, they've got so much earmarked, and this is the bucket of money that's available for those projects.
Well, it's interesting. Well, I was just going to say, it's interesting, because I think you're tapping on a question that I had in my head, is that what happens if the funding is locked? What happens if it's more than that?
So two things. One, if we enter the scoping period, there's no contractual obligation. So if it all falls apart, we walk away, no harm, no foul, there's not, there's not a cost there, there's nothing there. So you're not locked in until you, till you sign that agreement after the end of the scoping phase, from that standpoint. Obviously, that's what nobody wants, we still want to get the job done. That's the other benefit of this, is we've talked, I mean, the IFA was okay moving forward just the wastewater side. That wasn't a benefit to Angola. You guys understandably want the water user that goes along with that. So we've identified some core components of that scope for the wastewater and get the water to the end, which would get them in on a user standpoint, and maybe not get all the rest of the distribution, maybe not get the Trine State Recreation Area included in that. We could scope that stuff out and still get a base work and get them connected as a water and wastewater customer, and we can get that done for within that, and we've reviewed that with a couple contractors and ourselves, and everybody's on board that we can take enough out to for sure get it done, and then we'll just start adding back in whatever we can.
Mentioned the lift stations coming in higher, is it more of a materials issue than a labor issue?
No, it's just, I think that they were estimating at worst-case scenario every way around, and then knew they were the only bidder, and threw some more on top of that. That's, I wish I had something better, better explanation of that, but I really don't think. I mean, the one, the station's only like 12 feet deep, that's a really shallow lift station, there's just not a lot to it.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please.
If the savings with the BOT are a scaled-back project, why couldn't that be spec'd in bid?
It could, and that was part of our alternative option, was to put it out in a bunch of packages, and we'd have a bunch of alternates with that, and then basically, we'd get bids to see what we got bids on, and then we'd pick and choose the alternates. That just makes it, again, there's just more risk with that. We did not have anybody who was interested in it as a whole project. So the idea of putting it all back together as one project with alternate scope items on there, that could work, but we just couldn't find anybody who was interested for a number of reasons, partly because it's a very big in dollar sense, I mean, it's 20, 18, $20 million project, but the actual type of work fits a smaller contractor better. It's small diameter, low pressure, the grinder stations, even the water distribution is small diameter, so it's a whole lot of small diameter type of work spread out over a large footprint and costing a lot of money, which bit kind of strangely into the demographics of the scope that the types of contractors work. The bigger contractors that do $20 million worth of work, they want a big structure, a lot of big equipment, a lot of concrete, they said none of that. But the small contractors can't necessarily handle two years' worth of work for all of their crew for $20 million. So it fits somewhere in the middle, that was a struggle, and I think that's why we're hoping this direction will help fit that gap better.
You suppose the previous company will also be resubmitted?
Yes, they actually do BOT projects as well. Not every company does. They do BOT, and they said that they were interested. So I don't know for a fact they're going to, but they said they would be interested if we put it out as a BOT. So I think that we would see a qualification package from them.
Is the new process going to lengthen time from letting the contracts to completion?
No, it should not change the actual duration of the work itself, and if anything, we have some flexibility then with the contractor to figure out what that time is. Because originally, we had it at a year, and we pushed it out to 18. Some contractor said that was good, some said two years. We can actually sit down with the contractor and figure out where their manpower is and when they're going to start it, and when they're going to do it.
Do we have a time limit from the state's money perspective?
No.
Okay, because I mean, this duration could be longer.
It won't be longer than, it won't be longer than two years, there's no reason for that. I mean, we've talked to the contractors about that, there's no reason to spread it out beyond that. And the IFA has said they're okay, there wasn't a stipulation of that we had to have it done in a certain amount of time.
There is one bucket of money of the three.
You were correct, thank you. The IFA's money is broken down, some has to be used for water, some's wastewater, some can be either or. There was one bucket that has to be spent out, I think by the end of 26. So we'll just need to make sure that we put some earmarks in there, some milestones, a certain portion of the work must be done.
Any other questions? We reached this conclusion late last week. We thought about bringing an ordinance to you tonight that would allow us to move forward. We decided we did not want to rush that, we did want to allow ample time for legal review before we presented it to the council. We may ask you for three readings in one night, once we get it at the next council meeting, that would allow us to move forward in this, in this direction. Aaron, anything else?
No, nothing for me. Thank you for the time. Ryan, the mayor, Amanda, I'll have my contact information, so if you have any questions, feel free to funnel them my way. I'm happy to provide any additional information you have over the next couple of weeks if you've got questions.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Any other unfinished business? And then we'll move on to business. Resolution number 2025-889, a resolution authorizing the Court Treasurer to transfer from the General Fund to the Rainy Day Fund any unused and uncovered funds pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-8 at 5.1. Ryan, you want to fill the council in on what we're doing?
Yeah. This is our yearly transfer to the Rainy Day Fund. As you've seen on the Court Treasurer statements, we have a pretty helping balance in our tax levy fund, specifically the General Fund, so we have some extra funds to transfer. So I included the page with the resolution in the packet there that shows the calculation. Our maximum is 10% of our levy fund budget last year, which would be 1.138 million. So after speaking with the mayor, we're looking at transferring 1.1 million to the Rainy Day Fund.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution number 2025-890, resolution inviting for the transfer of cash to the local road and bridge matching grant fund. Would you approve?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Request approval of interlocal agreement between the Steben County Board of Commissioners and the City of Angola for a portion of the engineering service agreement for the extension of natural gas facilities in the amount of $271,235.66. I think the president of the commissioners is here, and might want to say a few words to us before we move forward.
Eric, I think you did a fine job the first time around. I'd be glad to. I'll keep it brief, 20, 30 minutes.
Perfect.
With notes addition to this, I guess, we'll give you. I'm sure you're all aware that we've been trying to come up with some type of agreement to bring additional infrastructure needs for natural gas to Steben County, including the city of Angola and a number of other municipalities over the last, I believe, probably 10 months, Mayor, is that correct, maybe when you presented to council last?
Yeah, I don't remember, it's been at least that long.
Been a lot of back and forths between the EDC, Steben County, some of the municipalities. A lot of input was put into that document, and we finally reached a compromise or an agreement that we felt comfortable executing, especially after having met directly with the governor, and that is continuing to assist in some of the funding needs for this project. So right now, it hasn't really changed much from last spring, where we have executed, the county has executed a engineering service agreement with NIPSCO in the amount of upwards of $1 million. It can't exceed that, it is an open-end contract, but what we have asked the local municipalities to do is to participate in some of the cost sharing of that, as we feel that the entire county will benefit from the increased capacity of natural gas. We did so by trying to find a stationary number, and we just use population based on the last census, so everybody is proportionate to their census population. My council has already approved $750,000 for the project. In the event we need to fund the entire amount, we will, or at least we put forth the idea that we will.
Are the other municipalities on board, as far as you?
I've presented to each one of them. Actually, you are the first that I'm getting in front of since we've signed the agreement, and I have.
Got a feeling that they are, Will, or?
Well, I've heard from at least one other that says yes, they're on board. And the first time around, it was very positive.
Where did the funds come from?
We were looking at paying this from Lit Economic Development. We have some leftover funds that we appropriated for some projects that it doesn't look like are going to take off this year.
It's not affecting any, anything else that's in the works right now?
Yeah.
Or day-to-day stuff?
If I may, this will be billed quarterly, so it could actually fall into not only your '25 budget year, but it could end up in some of your '26 budget year. And at any point in time with a two-day written notice, you can say, we're out, we don't want to do it anymore.
Set out your plan on handling, Ryan, if it's approved?
We'll go ahead and encumber it out of this year's budget, because we have the funds available, but yeah, we'll pay it, we would not invoice this company.
Fisher Hard, when the study gets done, you will receive a copy of it, will we all receive copies of it?
We will receive, each quarter, we will receive a public document that allows you to see some of the things that they did in it. There are some things that are.
Proprietary.
Yeah, we'll go with that for. They have offered nondisclosure agreements to certain people if they are interested in seeing more detail on it.
Like the taxpayers of our county, to see what we're spending for.
It'd be nice if we could.
Well, we might, but at least the mayor could have a copy of it.
That would be up to the mayor and whether or not he would sign the nondisclosure agreement. But there will be.
A decision has not been made, and first, I'm not sure I legally can do that as an elected official, but we'll find that later.
I would like to ask the mayor, just, do you see any other alternative to approaching this?
We have to have data that we can now go down to the state of Indiana, start looking for funding to get this project built out. I don't see any other way. All we have right now is rumor and you know, to talk to our people in Indianapolis, we have to have some kind of hard data, something in paper, something in black and white to lay in front of them and say, okay, help us figure out how to fund it.
What we have done, yeah?
Yeah.
This looks like a fair formula to me, I don't have any problem with the formula.
No, the progression is extremely fair.
You had to try and find something that was.
Apples to apples.
Yeah.
I will give permission for us to enter this interlocal agreement.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? By the fact that I will say that it is nice that the entire county, all the communities, the county, all come together to solve a common problem that affects us all. There's no way any one organization, the city, the county, the rest of these, we can't do it alone, we must do it together, and I thank Will and the commissioners and county council for doing this, and, yes, Isaac, yes, thank you for stepping in. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
We do have another meeting on April 2nd with the staff from the Secretary of Energy for the state of Indiana, so we've got a lot further in Indianapolis over the last two months, two and a half months, than what we had in the last.
Ever since, ever since we've got a big change in Indianapolis, things have been a little easier to get people's attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Request approval of a proposal of land surveying and engineered design services for Calvary Lane reconstruction project with Rowan Associate Inc. in the amount of $79,100. Motion in a second. Amanda, anything you'd like to add?
Just that this is for engineering for street, sidewalk, and water main replacement.
Sidecar could be put on Calvary. Is it going to, it's not going to change the intersection there, I'm wondering.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Request approval of proposal for professional service for the city of Angola GIS-based program in the amount of $29,000. Amanda, this is also on here, list of things to do.
For the past year, we have worked in-house, and by we, I really mean Nick in engineering, to upgrade our GIS program. We've switched platforms into a much more sophisticated platform that he has done. that he has done all of that work in-house. So now we're looking to partner with a consultant to take the map and all of the data and create some analysis and platforms and apps that we can really use more in the field with some of the utilities, street departments that we can use to, to help with capital improvement plans and planning and budgeting. So just having a, another consultant kind of take that to the next level. So that's what this is for.
Is this compatible with the county's G I S system?
Same program.
I assume these are experienced people you're dealing with.
Yes.
It integrates with the G I S, right?
It's the same platform.
Yeah.
Okay. Eric, Eric, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
I get pounded with acronyms every day. G I S? What is that? What is G I S?
Um, it's like.
Global information system.
Geographical information.
I don't use geographical. I think it's video, it's, but it's. Yeah. Something. It is.
It's allowed.
It's the area.
Always.
Analysis.
Okay.
Motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Review and determine if Fedema Industries, Inc., located at 1305 Ward Street, is or is not in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits for personal property.
I was told Rita was going to handle it today.
He was told.
Did Rita know she was?
Yeah, about two seconds ago. No, thank you, council. Thank you, mayor and staff for allowing me to come present tonight. Unlike Will, he said 30 minutes. I got three hours with you for the next couple of sections of your agenda. No, I'll make a quick, quick note of this. I'll spend as much time as you want me to on each of these if you need it. The CF1 process is an annual process for your county, or excuse me, your city council to go through and determine whether the tax abatements are in compliance. Tax abatements are generally generated by the business, either on a real estate or a personal property, based around a project. So the tax abatement has a timeline, each one of them a little bit different. Ryan did a great job. Thank you, Ryan, as he does every, it seems like everything he does, of marking within your agenda the timeline. I will tell you, not too long ago, we didn't really do that. I kept all the notes and sometimes my notes were not as accurate. So the duration of the abatement is the total compliance period. So let me give you a simple example before I start to explain these next 10 or so tax abatements. If a company commits to 10 jobs, theoretically, if it's over a five-year basis, they have up to five years to meet that marker. Or if they commit to a million dollar investment, they have technically up to five years to meet that marker. What you want to see as a council is a compliance, meaning a, a progress marker each and every year towards that. If for whatever reason, on one of the abatements, they roll back for some reason, I, on behalf of you through the fee-for-service agreement, ask for some sort of explanation. None of these have that right now. In other communities, there are a couple that have rolled back because of unforeseen examples or certain situations that result in any specific year. During the years of COVID 20, 21, 22, we had a lot of that because again, companies were determining if they were essential. They didn't meet employment marks or had a reduction in employees. So we adjusted for that. But again, I want to remind you, the compliance piece is you want to see progress. Some of your abatements have already met their targets. That's a positive. Some of the abatements that we'll talk about tonight, specifically EJ Brooks, are things to where ultimately the business closes, cease operation. And at this point, rather than keep them on the books, it's time for us to kind of close the book on those chapters, or chapters. So we're going to talk about a couple of those. First.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes, you may.
Once somebody reaches the level that you're looking for, is, is it done? Is, is the compliance watching done?
No. It, it goes for the duration of the abatement years.
Okay.
Yeah. So City of Angola does a great job with the resolutions, and I have to thank him for that. There's a threshold, a max threshold that's written in the tax arena resolution. That means from a year and a dollar amount, a company cannot exceed those. So from an investment standpoint and from a savings standpoint, those are capped. All right? There's a scenario in here where a, a company, I'll use Dave because he's right here. I like to pick on Dave. Univertical, by the way, I like you. No, he's, he's a great company. He has a great company. Let's say a, a company comes to us and says, I want to spend a million dollars on X, Y, Z expansion, includes real estate. But in total, they actually spent $2 million. We build the abatement on a million. That's the fault of the company not determining the scope of the project very well, not the fault of the community for not estimating the tax abatement well. We send that burden back to the employer where it should be. That's what the caps do, if that makes sense.
Sure does. Yeah.
All right. So let's get right into Fedemas. This year, this one's really easy. Len Fedema, especially otherwise known as Resolute Manufacturing now. All three abatements, as I reviewed them compared to the SB1s, he's either on track or in progress, meaning in compliance on all three. This one is actually by far probably today the easiest, other than Duke's, which is really easy too. All three of these abatements track really well based on prior years. So I'll step aside and answer any questions if you have any.
You want to handle them all together? Resolution number 2027-89, resolution number 2021-801, resolution number 2022-826. You want to handle them in mass or individually?
In mass.
Motion.
We entertain the motions for the abatement in mass.
For Fedema?
For, well, for all of them.
Finding them in substantial compliance?
In substantial compliance.
Motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We certainly appreciate their, being a member of our community. Gladly pass on their approval.
And Len, apologize, he could not be here tonight.
Review and determine if Univertical LLC located at 205 Ward Street, whether its street is or is not in compliance with the statement of benefits for personal property. Resolution 2019-752, personal property resolution 2019-766, real estate improvements, resolution number 2021-798, and personal property resolution 2024-865, and real estate improvements, resolution number 2024-866. The sheer volume of these tells you that this company is active and growing and expanding. Isaac?
We are now at the two-hour mark. Now, with this one, I enjoy working with this company. This company, I will remind council, is a Japanese-owned company. Alkanex is their parent company. They've done significant investments over the years to keep not only the operation with Angola strong, but also its leadership team strong. Dave Whitehead, Sean Floyd, others who have, have worked with our organization, Rochelle Orange, who's now no longer there, working at the Capitol now. They've done, they've tried everything to keep and stay engaged within the community. So I always enjoy working with Dave and his team. They also make it really easy on these tax abatements. The one who makes it hard, which should make it hard, is Kim Anderson, our assessor, who, who does a good job of checking and balancing this. I'm going to start with the last one first. 2024-866 was a real estate abatement. It is a real estate abatement that I'm going to recommend you mark as in compliance. But here's the significance. The cost improvements made of that project don't have a direct correlation into an estimated assessed value at, at its same taxation rate. Therefore, it lowers the project cost, not to Univertical, but to the assessed value. Okay? Should the assessed value over the next couple of years increase because of things not determined by Univertical, but by determined, be determined by the state, should they increase, they will receive a larger tax savings, but still under that ceiling that I talked about. Okay? So that's a unique difference in terms of how the assessed value sometimes can play with these numbers. Okay? So in this project, looking at all of them, again, Univertical makes it really easy. All of their projects at any given stamp, whether it's in 19, 2019, excuse me, 2024, they had actually two in 2019, real land property. 2024, they had two, and then in 2020, they all are within compliance in terms of meeting not only the expense threshold, both in real or personal property, and the employment number. Matter of fact, they exceed it by quite a bit in the employment number. I'll answer any questions that you may have. All the hard ones should go to Dave Whitehead, by the way.
Dave, do you have anything you'd like to add to the council this evening before they take action?
I'll just thank Isaac. He does a lot for us, always has. And we appreciate working with him. And, you know, broken record, but the investment's the easy part. You know, the, there's a lot of things out there that are really challenging, the, finding the right people, tell a story. Three weeks ago, I came in on Monday and we were up three. We had filled three positions. By the end of the week, we were down four. So, so, you know, the balloon kind of landed hard. I, you know, you get excited. But we all have that. And it's, you know, there's lots of reasons for it. But I think the things that, you know, Isaac works with to try and build the workforce in the area and attract, you know, people to this area, I think is, is as important, if not more, than any company's investment. Because, you know, we even put in automation and it still doesn't change. You know, companies are people.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what we all have to remember. And so that's what builds a community. So we're just proud to, you know, we're really happy to be here. You know, mention of the Japanese owner. You know, I see him once a year. They trust us, right? And they trust what we're doing here is the right thing and where we are is the right location. So it's pretty great to have that kind of, you know, foreign ownership that's hands-off. So I try not to screw that up. It's not one of my big goals. But again, thanks, Isaac. I appreciate it. Of course, everyone says.
Univertical has always been one of our better success stories on economic development. Ever since we lured him down from Michigan, filled an empty building in the middle of our community, partnering with the public-private partnership we did to solve a huge environmental problem. Univertical has just been a great company to work with throughout the years. We're, we're grateful for you to be here. And I'm glad you're staying on for a few more years. I personally like working with you and we appreciate your talent.
Everyone's a challenge. I'm working on a few more ways to keep him there.
Well, we appreciate his involvement. Entertain a motion. If you want to do them in mass or separately?
I would show.
Okay, a motion would find them in substantial compliance?
Second.
Motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Review and determine if Angola Wire Products, Inc., located at 803 Ward, is or is not in substantial compliance with a statement of benefits for personal property. Resolution number 2027-86 and resolution 2024-871. Isaac?
We are now at an hour mark. With these, another great company, another huge success for the city of Angola, Chris Eroy, his father, been in the community for a long time, Mike. The, the, the piece in terms of compliance, one thing you'll see here marked on 2020, that, that SB1 that was labeled at 150 employees, they're at 132. This is a classic example of what COVID did to the workforce, which we're still, we're still seeing residuals. But again, what, what we've seen from year over year is progress to meet these marks. So I've recommended on both of these for compliance, but I wanted to point that one out because again, the effects of COVID. If you look at the one that was done in 2024, or excuse me, 2024, where they were at, I want you to pay close attention to the salary line specifically on the total retained employees. And what this tells us from an employer standpoint is Chris and his team has done a fantastic job of increasing the average wage of his existing employees. Am I right?
Yep. That's a big priority.
Again, he gets all the hard questions.
Inflation.
So this is something we have seen over the course of all of our employees. I'm sure if I, I'm sure if I pointed to Dave, he would have said the same thing. We've watched these on a, on an annual basis, but we also watch them on a global basis based on industry clusters as well as individual industries. So both of these, I also recommend to council. Again, your approval.
Motion, anything you'd like to add?
I'll just again, say thank you to the city, the council, and Isaac, you know, for helping us navigate this kind of stuff. This is a newer process for us. And, you know, we've ended up nothing but great. You know, we've got a lot of investment coming up in this quarter. We're actually hiring right now, going through some of the same bumps, you know. And so, yeah, we're, we're growing, we're hiring people and trying to pay what we can. It's, it's been great. We appreciate the help. Thank you.
Another great partnership that we have with the Eroy family. We're very grateful that you're here and you keep the business here and you keep growing the business. You do a great job of running it and growing it. It's all good. Entertain a motion?
That we find Angola Wire in substantial compliance for, in mass for all. Second.
Second. Motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Chris, once again, thank you for being part of.
Chris, do you have any tips on who's going to win this pretty big race?
[laughing]
Review and determine if Duke and Billy's Rubiny LLC, DBA Duke Imports, Inc., located at 1105 North Williams Street, is or is not substantial compliance with the statement of benefits for real estate improvements, resolution 2021-797, seven years. Isaac?
Yeah, so Samir, Pavan, and Ravi, the father, all wanted me to apologize profusely, profusely, excuse me, but they could not attend tonight. Ravi, the father's 80-plus years old, navigating up and downstairs. It's not the best thing, even, even with the elevator. And Pavan and Samir are actually out at a conference trying to sell their products. So I think they're better suited there. So they apologized again profusely that they weren't able to come. This is one of those unique companies. If you have not toured any of our companies, or suggest as council, you should. We go on B R E visits, we invite Rita in there. Ryan is invited in a couple of them. We would invite anybody, any, any company that's within the city of Angola, we would, we would welcome you. And I'm sure they would open up their doors. This is one of those companies that if you've not had a chance to get involved in and take a look at, it's pretty unique to be here. But they've, they've also experienced some of their own issues, especially what I would say a ripple effect of COVID has caused. In this one, this abatement was built around real estate and was built around an expansion of about 37,700 square foot. You see the expansion is done. But one of the metrics that, that they really hit home on was the expansion of three new employees. When you dive into their compliance piece, and this is what I spoke to Pavan and Samir about, they've hired actually over three new employees. They've hired six. But on the retention side, they've lost some. So when they report 27 employees, to them, they've hit the three new plus some, but they've lost some retention. And what they realize is, again, I'm going to point you to the retained salary number. They had to make some massive adjustments in the, in the salary wages of their, their employees. They're in a very unique niche market. Salary ranges in that market aren't the, the most fantastic. They're not a tech industry salary.
Distribution center.
Their distribution, a 6 facility.
Yeah.
To have them here is great. But again, they're trying to make sure that they're paying a, a wage that is comparable not only to their industry cluster, which is not around here, but also within Steuben County. So they've made more aggressive wage, wage increase raises than what their industry has. But they've also done that in a little bit of a delayed sense. So they've lost some of their employees. So they're aggressively out trying to fill those positions right now. But remember what I told you first and foremost, this is progress. Okay? So this abatement itself, let me make sure I tell you correctly. It's a seven year, so it goes out to 3032, 3030, or excuse me, 2032, 2033. So we've got some time. I reviewed it. I've talked with principal holders multiple times about this project and other projects. It is my recommendation to council that we do approve this and give them another year to see where they're at.
I know. I move that we approve the, or that they are.
Thank you, Ryan.
In substantial compliance.
Motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We've spent a lot of time out there with these folks over the last year or so. They are very passionate about their business. They're very passionate about this community. They always brag about how great it is to be here in Angola. I always enjoy visiting. Very, very passionate folks. Okay, here's one that's not so good. Request retermination of the tax abatement for EJ Brooks, Titan Brooks, formerly located at 409 Hoosier Drive and no longer in business. Real estate. Real estate improvements and personal property, resolution 2020-776.
So to Mayor, to Mayor's point, yes, it's not so good, but it's what should happen every year in case a business does change its mind. You have the power at any given point throughout the abatement process. Should a company cease to exist, not show progress, you have the power as council to either show not in compliance, or in this case, terminate. My recommendation to terminate both of these abatements is simply, what? I mean, the business no longer runs out of that operation, and personal property that was in that operation is no longer there, probably not even in the state of Indiana. Therefore, what other choice do you have? For me and for Kim Anderson, it cleans up our paperwork. But again, normally, these things, real estate does have the opportunity to transfer forward, but that was not negotiated in this case. So therefore, it'll be a different use, it'll be a different purpose moving forward. So essentially, to clean up records, it is my recommendation to council to, to terminate both these agreements.
Isaac, potentially, then we could have other folks move into that.
Yes. So in this scenario, there's, it's unlikely that the property owner of the new Titan, or of the Titan Brooks building, the new property owner, will operate out of it themselves, but it's likely a new business could come in. And there, in that case, the new business coming in would be a lease agreement, likely. Real estate you would not see, but potentially, personal property you would. And as long as it's new personal property to the state of Indiana, then we can have a conversation about a tax abatement.
Okay. So is the company completely out of business in the United States?
Moved completely out of the state of Indiana.
But it's still, it's still operating somewhere in the United States?
Yes. And we do have about 24 of its current staff members working remotely still in the city of Angola. Interestingly enough.
So is, is when, when somebody does this, because they came into, into our offices with a, I'm going to say faithful, they're resting in business, and we gave them tax abatements under that viewpoint. Is there any possible clawback?
Not written under those old agreements, and that's.
Is there now in our?
Under our current agreements, there's no clawback. Your clawback is the ability to cancel at any time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Speaking legally, when I don't have the power to.
Would Kim be able to enter into our days?
Could be done, but how would, how, as a practical matter, clawing back from a company that's gone, it would be.
That's, that's a systematic problem in economic development amongst my colleagues.
So you could just be back to our city and.
Trying to find clawback measures on when a company doesn't meet its compliance. The best thing we can do is on an annual basis with this compliance piece is watch. You have the power in some circumstances to say, okay, I'm giving you a warning. We've had that in one company already, not in City of Angola, in another community. Usually, that lasts a year because we want to see change. I'm hopeful this year that will change with that one company. If not, then the company was told. The clawback feature, feature on a tax abatement really doesn't work very well, because again, you have the ability to cancel it at any given year.
I see that. Well, at the point, we, we get promises from them, and we, we, we're right. We're just basically transferring who's paying the taxes.
Yeah.
And so therefore, everybody, therefore, everybody in the community's getting screwed over because they promised something or unable or unwilling to.
Yeah.
Am I correct on that?
Yes, you are. Councilman Olson, and to be clear, and for maybe the three or four that are watching online, there's probably one in that.
That's fine.
They, they watch Mayor and the rest of council. They don't watch me. So the, the, one of the biggest misconceptions that we have in economic development is tax abatements are of present tax base. So we've just given tax abatements to Univertical, it reduces their tax to zero. I know that's not the case. You know that's not the case. What the tax abatement does is specific to that project. So if, if Univertical expands 20,000 square foot on a new building, or if Chris buys a new piece of equipment at Angola Wire, that, that project is what is considered abatement. The, the abatement doesn't happen, it's a butt-for-a-test in terms of their analysis. So when they look at their overall project, they may consider not doing the project unless there is an abatement that follows it. And that's where we try to generally help in most cases. We don't just give these out like candy canes. We go through that business analysis. And if it makes sense on the community, that's the abated tax. It's a phased-in approach. Okay? I know you, Mr. Olson, I know you understand that, but for, for the betterment of the community, I'm just kind of laying it out, because again, this is the biggest misconception is we reduce the tax to zero. No, you don't. Just this project. So in this case, that's why you have that annual review process, because again, if, if something's trending south, yes, you should have the power to.
Well, I think, I think too, we're talking about an incremental amount. We're not talking about it all to go away. We're talking about incremental, but.
But.
The thought is that if you find out they're leaving you, you want your money back.
Yeah. Actually, before they do.
Before they leave. Did these, were these guys big enough to have to go through a warrant or anything else? Or were they?
This, this actual closure required a warrant notice. There's 53 employees that were impacted.
Yeah.
So it had to go through the state process. It's debatable when it actually was announced, but we were able to, at least within the city of Angola, save about 24 employees. They are working remote still for Titan Brooks.
Well, we know where they can go to work.
They're, they're thinking about it right now. I don't know their names, guys. I'm just saying. But we were able to save a portion of those individuals, most of which lived either within the city of Angola or Steubin County. That's, that's the other side of economic development that we don't get to talk about, those warrant notices and what we do. Mayor was involved in that. Some of the city council members were involved in that.
You try to head it off, but you.
You can't.
Sometimes you're like.
I know.
There's been two projects in, in my career here at Steubin County that have been made by CPA somewhere else, probably in Scottsdale, Arizona. And at that point, you can't convince them otherwise.
No, I live through.
It's a, it's a paper transaction. It's not, it's not about any personal relationship at all.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about what Dave Olson, the councilman, was saying about the lost funds to the taxpayer, that you don't have anything to fall back on to retrieve any of that.
What it does is it ruins the potential for other.
Yeah, your, your contract was made in good faith, and it was dissolved in not good faith.
Yep.
I'm going to enjoy doing this. I request we terminate the tax payment. Dictated 409 Hoosier Drive.
I don't think you said that loud enough.
Where are they at now?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? The employees they do have left, our classified is working remotely, although the company did lease them office space here in town, and they do still have some employees, 20, 24, 24 of them, that are still in town and office space. So not all of their employees left, but the production.
They're running the production line.
Certainly did, yeah. And we have talked to some other people about utilizing that building that's built that.
Yeah. Just, just for purposes of session, the production people who are no longer working with this company, left Angola, they would have received unemployment benefits or some sort of payouts or something.
To my understanding, I think they received or offered at least a severance package of some sort. In the warrant process, we do this with all warrant processes, we try to get involved. Northeast Indiana Works, Ken Temple, Edmund O'Neil, there's a few other staff members. Those two are primary contacts. We work with them as they get notified typically first, the Workforce Development Agency for Northeast Indiana. We work with them to kind of coordinate, okay, who are these people? Can we relocate them? Out of that 53, how many do we have a chance to save to send to Dave or Chris or others? Some live in Michigan, some live in Ohio. Those are hard to get to stay in the community when they feel like they've been burned, not by the community, but by the employer. So we try to do what we can to, to keep those folks in. We'll offer sometimes job fairs. In this case, Titan Brooks did that, sent them to, to various resources to be able to try to get them re-employed elsewhere. I don't have an official count of how many.
So the possibility is there that they, we just were being facetious, but they could be working for, for you guys.
Yeah.
Did you hire any?
No. I'm hiring. Thank you. Check their resumes.
Thank you.
Employment is fairly low, so I'm sure they'll be absorbed if they haven't already.
Yeah, we're still tracking about 900 open positions across the county.
Motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And, oh, I think we're done.
We are, but that is about half of your CF1, so I'll be back before April 15th. Enrique is doing it next time.
Thank you, Isaac. No, I'm.
Thank you, Isaac.
Yep.
And a report of the Redevelopment Commission treasurer, it is attached. Ryan, do you have anything to add to it?
Just for Indiana code, I'm required to provide this for you guys every year, just for you to see, I guess. That's the reporter's treasurer of the Redevelopment Commission. So you can see the revenues received last year and their current fund balance. They don't have any expenses.
Any questions?
Not really a question, but just knowing that we have a fund of, of that kind of magnitude now, and will there be at some point a discussion to us of where it's going and how the money can be utilized?
Yes.
And all that needs to.
Briefly, you want to?
Didn't wait till it was my turn, but.
You can wait.
No, it's fine. I will just really quickly tell you that the Redevelopment Commission is moving forward with your guys' support in expanding their existing TIP district. So we, our fund is growing slowly but surely. We have at the process now finalized, almost finalized, the map of our new expansion. We have also almost finalized the new economic development plan for that TIP district. So we're moving forward. We've got, it's about a six-month process. So I will be back to discuss the appropriation of funds for using some of that fund that you're looking at for the resources, for legal descriptions, the surveys that are needed, pulling all of those deeds. I mean, now the work really starts. We've gotten the first portion done with Abin Marsh's help and kind of direction on that. And so I'll be meeting with the auditor, the assessor, moving forward on all of that. So some of this money will be, will be used. And in conjunction with that, I will just say that, I know it doesn't, you know, it's frustrating with the Titan Brooks, but the tax abatements, the TIP district, the AIF, there's certain, there's very few tools that we have for economic development, and so tax abatements are one of them. It's a risk, but you have to take it. The TIP district, we have not expanded in years. We've not used those funds. We've not done those public-private partnerships that we can do. So we're ready to do that, and the Redevelopment Commission is poised, and they're moving in that direction, so we're excited about that. So it is happening. You'll get probably some more information as we get a little bit closer, but it's still kind of in that beginning phase, but it'll be a good, a good economic development tool. And I will also say, and I know Mr. Hery left, but we are brainstorming some ideas to, to gain some workforce. We're using, we're doing Make My Move for remote workers, but we're also in the process of just starting some brainstorming on increasing our workforce here and what some incentives can be for not just businesses, but workforce as well. So that's in the future.
Reese, would it be possible to get an update on the Make My Move people in terms of where they are with interest in Angola and Steubin County?
Yeah. Yeah. We're just kind of getting it rolling. We're partnering with the county this time, and so we have a page. We've got some great incentives. We actually have, for the first time ever, a local apartment complex that has offered as part of the incentive, but their first month rent-free, which has never happened, so we're excited about that, offering as an incentive for that package. So, yeah, as that gets going, we'll definitely share.
Thanks.
Some of those updates. That's good. Yeah.
Great question, Reese, a great answer. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, the clerk, treasurer, depository statement, and cash reconciliation. For the month ending 50, where in 2025 is presented for council information. Reports, Ryan?
Nothing for me there.
Kim?
I have no reports.
Mayor? Reese, we stole your thunder.
I already babble mine.
Go ahead. You got anything else?
No.
You got?
I'll report.
Uh, yeah.
No report, sir.
Chief?
No report.
Amanda?
No report.
Anna, go on quick.